Father, we once again thank you for another day in our city. We once again ask for wisdom and discernment on this Board of Mayor and City Commissioners as we strive to make the right decisions for our community and its people. We ask blessing on our department heads, our city manager, and our staff, and our employees, and for those citizens that are in attendance this evening. God in direct us now in Jesus' name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Most of you received filed the agenda. On favor?
Aye.
Folks like sign. Most received filed the minutes of regular meeting April 12th, 2018, or recess meeting April 17th, 2018. Any discussion on those minutes? On favor?
Aye.
Close like sign. Hearing and reports. Commissioners?
I just want to welcome everybody that's -- we have just an overflowing crowd tonight, I noticed, but I want to make mention just a few things. I want to say thanks to Randy for moving the recycling bins underneath the Breeze. Hallelujah. We have a bunch of happy Little League parents up there that can finally find a parking place at the Little League games. There's hundreds of Little Leaguers up there looking for parking, so thank you. I got zero telephone calls on that too, by the way. Secondly, I want to say, I can't say nothing about our friends at Bill Ashland. They had a community cleanup day at Central Park, and there was 50-plus people out there to scrub the playground equipment. I took a trash bag all the way around, and there was minimal pickup. And so the park looks really, really good right now. There was all kinds of things going on that day. And last but not least, they're setting up a scholarship in memory of Rick Richardson to a deserving student at ACTC. And I think Bill, I want to say kudos to Bill Ashland. Third thing is the National Day of Prayer. It's going to be this Thursday, May the 3rd, at the Ashland Transportation Center at 8:00 a.m., and I'm looking forward to next day. First Friday is the very next evening. That's all I have, Mayor.
Thanks. All good stuff, Commissioner. Appreciate that. Anyone else?
He covered everything on my list.
Mr. Perkins? No list?
No list.
Okay. I just want to mention that with all the turmoil and the HEPA incidents that have gone on some of the restaurants, we contacted the Health Department, and we've got a meeting set up, I think, for May 1st, where we just want to talk to them about what role we can play to be an assist with, you know, I think it's a Health Department issue, but I think it's an issue for us in regard to being attentive to whatever we can do in it to ensure safety of all of our citizens, you know, whether they're in these restaurants or not, you know, whether they're there or not, they can pick it up from somebody else that's been in there. So I've done a lot of research on this since we were in the Roadhouse on April 12th, right in the middle of that window. I paid my shot, all that sort of thing, but, you know, it's a little eye-opener to keep track of that type of issue in the community. So we're, the manager and I, going to meet with Maria Hardy, and she's out of town. We'll be back, and we'll get a report out to you immediately of what we talked about, what she thinks about that. Okay. City Mayor?
Two quick things, Mayor. First off, the tennis court's down in Central Park. The company that we have doing the final application, as I mentioned previously, can't do the final treatment until the temperature stays above 50 degrees for five days. That's all day long, so we expect them to start on about the 7th of May. Should take about seven days to do complete. Secondly, it's 29th Street. Hopefully going through and seeing the paving that started from essentially near Mill Street up to Belmont, the 29th split, pretty close to that. 29th Street is now open. The road is very rough. There's rough patch in there. Belmont, from Belmont to Geiger will be shut down for approximately three weeks as we continue to do CSO crossovers. Other cement work on that. And also simultaneously, Simpson is closed as they put the 16-inch water line in there. They're about halfway done with that 16-inch line there. That's our city grid that's moving along with that very well. So the other thing is that while 29th Street is closed from the Belmont intersection up, there may, or excuse me, open, there may be flaggers as one of our contractors do cement work out there, but again, that road is open. And Mayor, all the comments I had, I'm going to hand it over for a river trail presentation. Maria, I think you want to -- Commissioner?
Yeah. Real quick, sorry, Commissioner, this home, 29th, well, 29th Street's a looming situation, but is the asphalt plant open yet?
They're light as, asphalt's been light.
Where?
On 29th Street. From Mill Street, you drive through there, 29th, approximately Mill Street up to the intersection, the final paving is down.
It's already, people have already tagged me on Facebook to let me know.
How about, how about from Carter to Mill Street?
If that was included, if that was included in the project that's been done, I just don't know the approximate start off the top of my head where that was. So the final, we're going to have, striking's going to be going down here very soon also on that portion, so it's very nice.
Okay. So I know along the paving, Mr. Carter, you know, forward some potholes this week to you, and since we have access to get it in our own trucks, the hot mix, I guess, now?
Right.
Okay. And you're on that stuff. I know you're on a lot, so I appreciate it. Mayor, sorry. Commissioner?
Just, Mayor Commissioners, I'd just like to preface Kim's presentation. I'm looking forward to seeing it this evening. I'd just say thanks to all those that had been involved in this project up until now. I'll just give you a few, a little bit of history about this. In 2016, of course, you know, there's good and bad on Facebook and on social media, but in 2016, there was a questionnaire about what the public would like to see happen all over town on the riverfront. And so I took a few notes, and one of those requests was for a hiking trail on the riverfront. And having been involved in the community build up at the Charles Betty Russell Trail, I ran into Wes Thompson, Dave Daniel, and Blake Gillum last June and asked them if they'd be interested in partnering with us with Bill Ashland in a community build on the river. And they were very enthusiastic about it, and so I pursued it. I want to thank the mayor, first of all, for suggesting a committee to be formed for this, made up of people from local business, park board members, Bill Ashland members along with staff, Sean Murray, Amber Berry, Ryan Eastwood, and myself, E.B. Jevenin, Deborah Foster, and Blake Gillum, and last but certainly not least, our landscape architect professional, Kim Jenkins. And I want to thank you for your hard work in drafting the blueprint for something that I think the people of Ashland can enjoy for many, many years to come. The park board unanimously approved this last week, and so I want to hand it over to you, Kim. I thank you very much.
Ladies and gentlemen, I appreciate your leadership on this issue. Something to be proud of. Our rest, an architect, landscape architect, is she ready tonight for us, do you think?
Mr. Simmons. There's only five of those there. I apologize. Share if you don't mind.
She knows there's five of us.
Exactly.
You're not one of them.
Engineering was kind enough to provide me with an aerial photograph that they scaled to a 40-scale drawing, which is what I presented to the committee and the park board, and then they shrunk the drawing down for you all to look at. You can see, so, I can't really show you this big drawing, or maybe a shine will help me, it'll work. I'm going to stand here. The curvy line is obviously the riverbank. This is the green bridge. This is the blue bridge. These are the railroad tracks. This curved portion is the existing paved riverfront park. There's a spur that got added that comes down to here, and it stops. It's kind of close to the green bridge, I mean, the blue bridge. And so the object was to extend the walking trail as far as we could, and we end up with about an extra quarter of a mile loop trail that goes around and connects. And so the orange highlighted is just orange so that you can see it, and that's the color it is on your little sketches there. That's all on the flat. It would all be ADA compliant. That's where the crumb rubber is being proposed to do about an eight-foot wide trail. Then the green lines are the proposed over-the-edge paths that up, Kevin Hill and Ryan Eastwood went down there and marked out where they proposed trails could go, and our committee went down there and looked at it. And then when we had the very, very, very high water, we all got emails saying, "Go look at the flags." And the flags that marked it off, almost all of them were just being laughed at by that very high water. They did a tremendous job following the contours and getting in a trail there if it's going to work. The uppermost parts of that trail would probably be the crumb rubber, and then the parts that dip down and actually take people down to the water's edge certainly would not be anything except a, you know, groomed dirt trail, kind of like Charles Betty Russell is right now, because it'll always be in the water. That part has not been taken into consideration for the linear footage, so when I say a quarter, an extra quarter mile, that's just this part right here, okay? There are some extra elements that have been proposed in there to enhance the overall effect. One of them is right here, and one is right here. The one down here between the bridges is proposed for a piece of public art down the road. It's not an immediate thing. Don't have the money for that right now, but it's just incorporated into the design to really be thinking about that. And then this is gathering of a lot of the, there are a lot of large foundation type stones scattered out along the walkway, and I propose that those be relocated because they're really difficult for the parks crew to maintain around them. And so we're going to use part of them where they excavate, very minor excavation along the riverbank. We're going to use those in strategic places to be a sort of a retaining wall or a place to sit down. And then the others are going to be gathered right here, and that's a 25-foot diameter council ring, so to speak, that creates a gathering place for people to, you know, terminate, a place to gather with trees planted around it. And so you walk past that, and of course, you see this loop and this loop allow people who don't want to go all the way down under both bridges, if they don't think they can make it, they can turn around and go back to where they came. So it works pretty well. It's a really, it's going to be a great space. There are some issues of, you know, what it looks like along the railroad tracks. We have a really nice stand right here of white pines and Leyland cypress that are doing a great job of screening. There are some open areas that we've talked in committee and with the park board about eventually augmenting that with native plant material. Not in the immediate plans, but I just want to have that, you know, on paper of what it could be. And we want to just try to, in the course of the community cleanup portion of this project that Bill Ashland has been so gracious about, we want to try to eliminate as many of the invasive species along the waterway that's going to be things like Japanese honeysuckle. There's a lot of Japanese honeysuckle. When that gets scrubbed out, if it does, it'll really open up the view from all points. People will be able to see the river a whole lot better. So, questions?
Are you going to, like, lay out those trees to give us a better view against the railroad tracks?
Oh, that was, sorry, I guess I didn't pick that far enough. Where I have it crosshatched along the edge here, that's where we're proposing that it be enhanced. There would be a, the plan includes putting in a post-in-wire fence just so that we don't have too much children going back and forth. I can't stop an adult with a post-in-wire fence, but we will keep the kids off of railroad tracks. Risk management was already consulted, and that plan of that fence works just fine. This line right here is actually the property line at AK's property, and so that's where we stop, and that's proposed as a big buffer planting so that when you approach the end of riverfront park, your buffer can likely unmount you there. You know?
I think it's a beautiful plan.
It's a beautiful space.
Yeah.
It's nice. Easy.
Thank you. Everyone will be impressed with it.
Great. Thank you very much.
I'd also like to thank the Boyd County Fiscal Court and Nikki Smith for their contribution of the crumb rubber, because a stone is going to be very, very expensive, but this is free. So we're thankful for them.
Excellent, Commissioner.
Did we hear any motion there?
To approve that design? Yeah, I think we did.
I made the motion we approve.
Second.
Any discussion? On favor?
Aye.
Close like sign. And like everything Kim does, it leaves room to do things in the future if needed or necessary, if money is available or whatever. Thanks, Kim. We appreciate all your work on it. Okay, great, Commissioner. What, anybody else? City Mayor?
Sure.
Okay. At this point, our meeting's a public participation. If you have an issue, the American Commissioners, we would ask you to give your name and address and to limit your comments to five minutes or less. We're glad you're here. Old business out of May.
First reading, April 12th. Organ City of Ashland, Kentucky authorizing and directing the merit executed contract between the City and Mountain Enterprises, Inc., replacement and replacement of itumina asphalt material for the 2018 street paving program in the amount of $737,405.50 for the City Department of Public Works.
Senator? Quick for y'all move on, if we could, we do a paving. I do want to, I'll just have to, just as far as commenting, just where we are at on the final list for the paving?
I think they're waiting on feedback from the Mayor Commissioners. If there's no feedback, then we'll publish that on website.
How quickly do we expect that to be initiated once you, what's the deadline for us to get back to you so we can get started?
Anytime during the paving season, really. If it comes up, if you, you don't have to go helter-skelter right now, but what's on there, I guess, is estimated to be close, I mean, to what our funds will hold up. My radio show on Wednesday, I did tell people in the community that we have a not all-inclusive list that we start with, and a lot of it's based on residents calling us, city staff being out and running into bad roads that need repairing and all that. Some of them are very obvious, but that any of our residents can also call down here, and maybe their road is worse than one we have on there, you know, something like that.
Is that an option on our?
It's kind of an open, it's open-ended, if you come up with one.
I think you kind of adopt the plan now. Doesn't mean it can't be amended.
Yeah.
But you do adopt the plan.
This total is based on historical performance over the summer, and, you know, we have flexibility on adaptation.
Okay, yeah. Done a motion? Yep. Second. On favor?
Aye.
Close like sign. Item B?
First reading, April 12th. Organ City of Ashland, Kentucky amending ordinance 169, series 95, as previously amended, commonly referred to as a stop sign ordinance, authorizing placement of stop signs eastbound and westbound alleys between Bath Avenue and Central Avenue at the pedestrian entrance to Ashland First Church of the Nazarene located at 2201 Bath Avenue, placing stop signs eastbound and westbound on Mayo Plaza at its intersection with 25th Street.
Any discussion? On favor?
Aye.
Close like sign. Item C?
First reading, April 12th. Organ City of Ashland, Kentucky authorizing approving change order number three between the City, Ashland Furnace Company, and Ashland Child Development Center, contract regarding installation of HVAC system at 1526 and 1538 Central Avenue, increasing the amount of the contract by $1,950 to the Department of Community and Economic Development through the Housing and Urban Development, Community Development Block.
On favor? Close like sign. Item B? Or excuse myself?
Yes. First reading, on April 12th. Organ City of Ashland, Kentucky authorizing directing the merit executed agreement between the City and GRW Engineers, accepting the terms and conditions for providing water treatment plant scatter and field instrumentation needs assessment in the amount of $19,900 pursuant to proposal adopted ordinance 27, series 18, Department of Engineering and Utilities.
On favor?
Aye.
Close like sign. Item B?
First reading, on April 12th. Organ City of Ashland, Kentucky authorizing directing merit executed contract between the City and Marcus Hadden DBA H&amp;S Construction Lawn Care for purchase of all labor for the abatement of high grass and weeds on residential lots throughout the city limits for the Department of Community and Economic Development.
And this, Mr. Pullamar, for people who are violation and they get a notice?
Right, they get a notice, they have 10 days to comply, and if they do not comply, then both of these two ordinances coming up, our contracts with firms will go out.
Okay. Thanks a lot. On favor?
Aye.
Close like sign. Item M?
First reading, on April 12th. Organ City of Ashland, Kentucky authorizing directing the merit executed contract between the City and Daniel Runyon DBA Daniel's Lawn Care for purchase of all labor for abatement of high grass and weeds residential lots throughout the city for the Department of Community and Economic Development.
Any discussion? On favor?
Aye.
Close like sign. Any other old business? Consent agenda?
I passed out a bid from Companion Stop Loss Provider for our Medbin healthcare coverage. We have to notify them by 4 o'clock tomorrow of our acceptance of their bid, so I would ask for a motion to amend the consent agenda to allow, to add acceptance of the bid of Companion for the stop loss coverage for the city health coverage.
And motion amid the agenda for that item? Any discussion? On favor?
Aye.
Now, now look at consent agenda that's on there now. Any questions on consent agenda? Have a motion?
I do want to make a comment on the consent agenda. We just attended part of this meeting. The police department has joined a program with Pathways called the Angel Initiative Program to assist those folks that are obviously having issues with addiction, and I just wanted to commend our chief and Pathways and other agencies that support this program for the work they're doing. I think it's important, and I appreciate you stepping up and taking on another task that no one's asked you to do, but you know, it's the right thing to do. I can't thank you enough.
Thank you.
Thanks, Chief. You had well, I'm glad for bringing it up. We were all just over to police department offices, and Judge Davis was there, our county attorney was, our Commonwealth attorney was there with some of her staff. Pathways had seven or eight people there, and it's a very proactive step by the City of Ashland and under the leadership of our police chief, Todd Kelly, to make people in the community that are selling, are on, whatever the case may be, that may get to a point that, you know, enough's enough, and that happens every once in a while, will still continue, and I was glad the Commonwealth attorney was there and the judge was there. We'll continue to do the appropriate enforcement, as the front page of papers showed this morning, but we want to get an additional program there. It's a scourge of the United States, a scourge of the world, probably. We know scourge in Kentucky and certainly in our tri-state area, and there isn't an easy solution. There may not be a solution, but I know this, the only way we can make inroads is with every agency in our community and our tri-state area involved is on the way we'll make any progress with it. We have an outstanding comp care center in Pathways. They're in 10 counties. They have homes, they have beds, they have active care here in the city limits of Ashland. Our police officers have bought in with the chief, and of course, they'll, they'll be, you know, utilizing the verbiage when they arrest, pick up, whatever, to get the word out that we're, if you come forward, we're not going to arrest you. You know, we're going to put you in some kind of contact and take you there even, and help you get remediation for it. So it's a very proactive step, and all of us will continue with the Health Department, Pathways, and the law enforcement, and the courts to address these as strong, as strong as we possibly can. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Okay, on favor?
Aye.
Close like sign. New business, item A.
Organ City of Ashland, Kentucky authorizing directing the merit executed agreement between the City and Alan S. Ray and Tina Campbell regarding an encroachment for a sign at 1612 Bath Avenue port on the city's roadway.
Any discussion? On favor?
Aye.
Close like sign. Item B?
Organ City of Ashland, Kentucky authorizing directing the merit executed agreement between the City and Doris C. Mead regarding parking encroachment at 800 Winchester Avenue on the city's roadway.
Second. Any discussion? On favor?
Aye.
Close like sign. Item C?
Organ City of Ashland, Kentucky authorizing approving change order two between the City and Tri-State Construction Enterprise LLC, increasing the contract amount by $24,740. And extending the completion date by four weeks in the contract for the city's new water distribution and wastewater collection facility.
Have a second?
I don't have a second because it needs to be done, but we definitely need to have discussions about this.
Good, exactly. Right, I researched a little bit, and all that City Manager kind of explained the level in, and I know that the ground breaking was held in November of my election year. I went in office, she had the groundbreaking took place, and we did have a separate contractor to put the building up, and then we have another contractor to do the interior work. And I felt like it's way too long. I had questions about, for instance, we toured a lot of facilities the other day. We go in there to tour that facility, and nobody's working, and that really concerned me a lot. The manager apprised me of this state, a state legislation that is really throwing a wrench into things, and there's X number of days the contract is still within, even though we're all frustrated. I know our utility departments are frustrated, so I'll just let you kind of bring it to point.
Thank you, Mayor. So I think you set it up effectively. We, we lost expanded jurisdiction in the timeframe as early January, I believe. Basically, expanded jurisdiction is if--
For most of us that I didn't know, but you might want us to explain very briefly what expanded jurisdiction is.
A lot of cities had the ability to expand a jurisdiction. That was the ability to rate our own projects and determine if they met all proper engineering design specifications, state regulations, et cetera, on properties that are above 10,000 feet. 15 of 21 cities in Kentucky lost expanded jurisdiction last year. It'd be speculative to me to know why the state went after that. Our code enforcement, economic development, has been sending our code enforcement folks here the other week up to Frankfurt in an effort to try to get that jurisdiction back. When we lost that jurisdiction, the state came in and made their own analysis of the Mill Street facility, and the specific thing that this addresses is the fact that they believe that fresh air HVAC system rotating fresh air in was necessary for that facility. It's not something that we had predicted. And my, my interpretation is kind of a difference of opinion, however, since they have the expanded jurisdiction, we couldn't move forward with the project until we addressed that. So this is what that $24,000 does install a fresh air system. The silver lining to this is that it's a much more effective system. It's a Fujitsu clean air system, and essentially, as a result of this, it's a four-week delay. The reason we didn't see people in working that day, and there's been a lot of days where folks haven't been waiting, is this first domino had to fall. So before they did drywall, for example, completed to make sure the redesign of the air system in order to meet the state standard. And I think that was it.
Well, that was City Mayor earlier today. My position was, I couldn't understand why they could have been running wiring, put up insulation in.
I met with the contractor before he ever started, and went over some things that I had concerns about in past work, and was assured, you know, we wouldn't run any.
I'll just say from the standpoint of, and Commissioner, you can sort of back me up on this, I hope, we were here when we decided that we needed this facility because it was a dire emergency.
Don't worry.
A dire emergency. And here we are, still don't have them in this facility. It's very frustrating, and it feels like it's very poorly managed from any aspect.
There was one other thing I left out, Commissioner, and that is, as the mayor mentioned, there was two different contractors that didn't work. There were some errors in ordering, for example, the doors that went in. Before our second contractor came in, we wanted to make sure all punchless items were done, so that did delay the start of the second contract. It doesn't scratch your itch that it's frustrating, it needs to be done.
At one point, who is accountable for that? I mean, we are, obviously, but we're not there, Billy.
At the end of the day, it's me.
Well, I want you to, on our behalf, to let the contractor know, with all those things considered, we're still not very happy with how it's.
I spoke to the contractor.
Okay, hesitating, Lee? All favor?
Aye.
Close the lights on. Item B?
Ordinance City of Ashland, Kentucky authorizing the creation of position of programs and grants specialist as replacement for the positions of Secretary Two and Development Grants Administrator in the Department of Community and Economic Development, adopting the revised job description for the position of Superintendent in the Department of Finance, Division Mass Transit, and amending the authorized positions. Listing of the policies and procedures, compensation plan and classification plan is adopted by ordinance 51 Series 17 as previously amended.
Any discussion?
Just kudos to city staff for looking at what's efficient and combining positions that can be combined to save some money.
I'll just about vote on every combined position on what it is, and I appreciate everybody's involvement. I know you're looking at that, so that's great. Item B?
Ordinance. No, no, no. We both.
All favor?
Excuse me.
I knew there was voting on that, so that's why I didn't talk at all. Item B?
All right. Ordinance City of Ashland, Kentucky amending Section 4, ordinance 21 Series 12, previously amended by ordinance 65 Series 18, which commonly known and referred to as a sign ordinance regarding political campaign signs. This removes the conflicting provisions of ordinance with the U.S. Constitution.
Any discussion? I just have one thing, Mr. Pulliam. Not dealing with political signage, but anytime I see the word signage. Do we have any progress on the billboard situation? Are we in process of getting it under control in the city limits, other than state highway?
Yeah, we did pass one ordinance already to reduce the number in a zone if an electric billboard is, electronic billboard is added in that zone. And we're looking at some other alternatives to.
And let me, let me ask a question for you in the future, if you find ways that we can reduce the number of billboards in the City of Ashland, please let us know.
Your honor.
All favor? Aye. Item B?
Ordinance City of Ashland, Kentucky amending the zoning map of the official zoning ordinance of the city, number one-on-one Series 86, as previously amended by changing zoning classification of 360, 361, 364, 369, and 370 Blackburn Avenue from R5 multi-single-family residential medium density to B1 neighborhood business.
Any discussion?
Just want to clarify, how does the process begin for somebody changing a zone? Just for those that may not know, I don't know if that's a question for the city manager or Mr. Pulliam.
Let me, I'll just, the application is submitted to the planning commission, and they act on it, and then it comes to me.
So the neighborhood was notified as this changed?
Oh, sure.
Okay. Very good.
And advertised.
Great. Okay.
Happened back in 2007. This is, this is a, please, I got drunk.
Right, okay, got you.
Okay, all favor? Aye. Close the lights on. Any other new business? Thank you all for being here. We appreciate it. We're adjourned. All favor?